Call the road guys at one on one. Still here to start with our roll call.
Howard Hager.
Room.
Diane Jordan, Jackson, Robert Daniel.
Here.
Chad Sargent.
Here.
Brendan Walters.
Here.
Gordon's president.
Recognition of guests, we want to welcome everyone for coming. Let's go to item four and do we have any public comment? Yes, not. Can you backside it a few?
Yes, but they didn't.
They didn't show. Consent docket number five. All the items are considered routine by board trustees and will be enacted with one motion. Discussion desired on any item, this item may be removed, consent docket may be considered separately. So we've got approval of May twenty nine, special meeting minutes. Does anyone have any concerns for May twenty ninth, May eighth, May seventh? Or any of the payment of claims?
I don't have a problem with any of it, but I didn't want to make a public statement and make the public aware. Since we're trying to be government of transparency. So everyone is aware. You brought bring attention to Liz George, our lawyer's invoice for this month. Was a total of eight thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars, which is fine, but on the first page, and I'm going to read it out on four two, examination and analysis of search emails pursuant to open records request to Crystal Johnston to mark what was proceeded, what to pursue produce. Six hundred and sixty bucks. Four three, the same thing, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars. Four five, the same thing, six hundred and sixty dollars. Four nine, same thing, another four hundred dollars. So this month alone, we paid our lawyer two thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars to look at documents from open records requests.
All from.
Just want to make the public aware that for that concern of these fearless requests and what is custom accounting, or what's it called in custom city.
And all those requests are from the same person.
All those requests are from the same person.
What was the time again?
Two thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars. That does not include, go ahead.
That does not include staff payroll that's involved with doing these requests, nor does it include our billing received from our IT company that has to go through each and every single one of these communications and verify and validate that the public records request is fulfilled.
And because that person is claiming news media exemption, we cannot ask for reimbursement of that. So just want to make the public know where your money is going, where our tax dollars are going. We're trying our best. Anyway, that said, I'd like to make a motion to accept the change in the document as it is.
That work. I'll second that. Roll call, Lou.
Howard Hager.
Yes.
Diane Jordan, Jackson, Robert Daniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brendan Walters.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We are absent today on, well, Charles World will be absent today. He's got a personal matter he had to deal with, so we're going to have Howard. Do the treasurer's report fill in?
Not going to be a full treasurer's report, but give you some numbers, then I'll give you a layback. All I did was print out the checkbook. You can see on that first page, about three quarters of the way down, our balance at the end of this month, our balance is on May thirty first, eight million nine hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-two cents. In pencil up above there, all I did was add our income. Granicas collected one hundred and thirty-seven thousand two hundred and ninety-seven and seventeen cents of lodging tax. I didn't print out my spreadsheet, that's a little low, but remember, this is May, so that was April, it was April, the slow month. Hochtown collected twenty-three thousand three seventy-three. Sales was good, three ninety-seven, two oh seven, sixty-one. Use is sixty-six, fifty-eight, forty-one. Cigar cigarette, eighteen thirteen thirty-six. Chalk talk contributed seventeen thousand one hundred dollars. And for the first time, yay, we collected fourteen thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars and ninety-three cents in interest on our bank account. And that was not for a full month. It was about that. I think that started around the tenth of month.
You wouldn't know if that chalked off, is that part of that quarterly community?
Yeah, and like I said, I apologize for not printing out my normal Excel spreadsheet.
I just didn't know.
If I remember correctly, two months ago, if you think it's quarterly, you think it would hit every three months, but if I remember right, looking at my spreadsheet, two months ago, we got thirteen or fourteen or fifteen thousand. But it's averaging coming in every two to three months, for us. I'm sorry, I did not add up the, added up all the credits, but I did not go through all the debits. But between Julie and I, we will make sure that we have a full financial statement next month. We're in good shape.
Ben, yes.
I'd make a motion to accept the treasurer's report as presented.
I'll second that. Roll call, Lou, please.
Howard Hager.
Yes.
Diane Jordan, Jackson, Robert Daniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brendan Walters.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Item A, town administrators monthly report.
All right. Good afternoon, board. Let's talk about everybody's favorite subjects, right? You know, we know, we all love fire, and we sure do love our, our, so now you're in a hot shot later. I'm going to have to show you up a little bit here today. You'll show me up later in the end of this. So inside of your, inside of the sleeve of your binders here, you should have a copy of my report for this month. It's just basically a compilation of all my weekly reports that I've sent to you guys, so nothing really, you know, much of a shocker. But this is just for the general public here, so let's get started. So Mako Road construction is still set to begin on the sixteenth of June. Again, the reason for the delay in the beginning of construction for Mako Road is because the asphalt plant, the newly built asphalt plant did not have the correct type of polymer that we need. So it took them about thirty days worth of delay to order and to get that polymer in, so they can make the type of aggregate that we need. So again, June sixteenth is whenever we're looking at beginning construction for Mako, and here within the next week, we'll be sending notices out on pub, on social media posts, we're going to send some maps out, just kind of advisory, notice of construction to occur and the timeframe and expectation for that construction to be completed. Second of all, we've got Camp Ranch Road, I did receive a task order back and the engineering estimate back from Garber Engineering, and again, this is for just engineering and design and handling the bidding process. From Garber, it's going to be about a hundred and sixty-four thousand nine hundred dollars. Garber will perform an extensive land survey, drainage mapping the area, stormwater management, erosion control plans along with that. So this will be an extensive and comprehensive study. Felt like the extra work on this is a little bit more necessary, because this is our highest traveled local road volume. So we're running about nineteen hundred vehicles per day on Camp Ranch Road, and so that's going to be a higher travel volume, so it's very pertinent that we get this project correct on the first swipe and we get us a fifteen, twenty year road build out. Moving forward from that, Chalktop Hills got us some task orders for this, this agenda here, you guys are going to be voting to approve these. Task order number one is for a Chinook hydraulic study. Task order number two is going to be for Chinook, Halibut, and Greenling design and bidding services. It's for the hydraulic studies, it's going to be about thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, and then for the design and engineering and bidding process, it's going to be thirty-nine thousand five hundred. We're looking at running a four inch asphalt spec, replacement of existing and adding tin horns where required by the hydraulic study. And all driveways in across all three of these roads here will have a five foot apron and a tin horn installed on all of these.
Now, what's it, what's the apron?
The apron is just an asphalt apron, so as you're pulling into your driveway, you're going to have about five foot of your entry, of your ingress egress paved with, with the asphalt. And then underneath it, we're going to lay the tin horn. So everyone's going to get whole new kind of aprons to their driveway.
Five foot of drive, new drive.
So we're not paving people's driveways, this is just simply, this is just simply the, the turning into, turning off of the roadway into your own driveway, and we're dropping the tin horns in underneath.
It just, is that in the public crash way?
That's correct. It's within the thirty-five foot.
That's going to bear fit tremendously on a lot of issues we have with tin horns now. Because like my tin horn is, is covered in gravel.
And there's several driveways all across the Chalktop Hill subdivision that don't have tin horns at all, and we're going to be installing them. So tearing up old ones, replacing the old dilapidated structures, and then within where there's not currently tin horns installed in driveways, we're going to be installing new ones there. And then running a five foot apron into it.
Can you explain again the reason for the hydraulic study, the necessity?
The reason for the hydraulic study is there's still a lot of manmade changes to the flow of water over there in the Chalktop Hill subdivision. So there's been a lot of development, there's been a lot of kind of taking drainage into our own hands type situation. And so the hydraulic study is going to identify what the original and what the natural flow of water should be as it sheds towards that creek that's right back over there. I think that's still the Yashaw that goes through there, is it? Is it the Yashaw that goes through Chalktop Hills? Anyways, there's, there's a, there's a creek that, that's at the lower elevation points, as you're coming back around Chinook, and just before it turns into Orca, you have a creek structure that's, that's supposed to take the majority of that, and then, and then it sheds on a, on a kind of a peak of your elevation, sheds off to the east as well. And so this is going to be a comprehensive study about where and how that water should flow. And so whenever we go to restoring and building the correct bar dishes and adding the correct drainage structures, this is going to protect the town from any sort of litigious nature. So as we're correcting the flow of water as to where it should be on an engineered spec, you know, the town will have plausible fits.
Thank you.
Okay, so also last point on roads here, met with engineers from Benchmark, I met with Charles Hinkle, you guys all know him, love him. He's going to be running all of our inspections on all of our asphalt and road enhancement programs. So he and I, we drove around town, and I established a project prioritization and conditions list for the newly proposed budget. So this will be the, a part of the projects that I would like to seek approval from you guys from, for the one point nine million that you guys have allocated to roads rehabilitation and maintenance for this coming fiscal year. This is on top of the previous three million that you guys have allocated for last year. So we'll have last year's projects that you had already voted to approve, and that you had already budgeted in that pre-million, and then we'll have the one point nine in a separate column. And then these are going to be all of our newly proposed projects, and then I'll introduce it to you guys to review one by one, we'll kind of explain anything, I'll have all the cost estimates associated with those projects that I'd like to do. And then I'll have kind of a reasoning behind why these are prioritized in a different major. So it'll just be broken down, kind of like that big project I did at the end of last year with you guys, we just kind of broke down all the roads projects. I'd like to do the same thing in this case.
So my question is that when the fiscal year ends in June, they, me and Howard were having this conversation, that money that we had allocated for roads.
Yeah.
Does that go back to the general fund? Do we have to reappropriate that?
You would have to reappropriate it.
Okay.
That's correct. So you would have to still make an action, yes. We never got to spend those funds, we'd like to spend those funds still on those projects, we're going to throw it back to streets.
One of the reasons that I didn't put it in this year's budget, just to bring that three million over, and now, now we've got a thirteen or fourteen million dollar budget instead of nine million dollar budget. And I wanted to make sure that the board reappropriated the three million specifically for the road that we set aside before. And we're going to do the same budgeting here in another month or two, we'll just reappropriate it for that, those projects, and that keeps it separated, we've already got it separated, so we're talking about.
We get on roads?
Yeah.
Okay, so the rest of the stall is miscellaneous, you know, busy work on a couple of different projects here and there. Attended a meeting with Lieutenant Governor Matt Pinnell, with Mayor Sergeant here, met with various stakeholders regarding fourteen and a half acres and the land appraisal that's over there, which is a potential site for wastewater treatment facility. We've also identified in that process some other parcels that have access to the Yashaw Creek, which is the creekway that we are getting our discharge permit to, so as long as the land has access to the Yashaw, we're in good shape. So moving forward from that, created a public facing advertising materials to inform the community about the requirement for building permits. And then with the help of Skip and Shelley Copeland here, we did build an all in one page website, on our website dedicated for building permits and information on how that process works, who to contact, and what to do. So it's kind of a one stop shop type of situation. Handled several rezones, rezoned requests, met with several property owners and adjacent property owners with regards to those rezoned requests. We're walking through those, and I would expect to have at least two public hearings at the end of this month for rezoned requests, and then that means in the July, the early July board meeting, that if it does pass the planning commission, then at that point, you guys would be hearing on those rezoned requests. That is if it does pass the planning commission. Attended OML leadership conference, partnered with Mayor Sergeant here to do a welcome speech and a history overview of Hochtown and all the projects that we're facing today. We've also presented to the group with a short segment on tourism, and I did that with Linda Hinkinship and then the NCTA's group, I forgot the name of the group, but Matt came out and helped us out with the tourism ministry over there, did a wonderful presentation on that. Worked with engineers to design the scope and obtain task orders for Camp Ranch Road, Chalktop Hill subdivision, identified ground opportunity that would pay for planning and engineering costs associated for the paving of Press Road, and I forwarded that to Commissioner Williams, just trying to help the county out with some of their projects. Developed, again, we already talked about this, building permit campaign, worked several public records requests that we have actually sent to the Hochtown Police and Fire Department that have still not been fulfilled. We're meeting with our attorneys, still building out plans of what we're going to do about our public records requests with HBFD not being fulfilled, we're developing our plan of action as we speak. Worked with our lobbyists, Skip Copeland here, and our National Zip Code Coalition on the Zip Code Project, assisted writing HR three zero nine five Zip Code Resolution, which is what you guys have just recently passed in support of. Designed several updates to our zoning regulations, designed concepts of entertainment overlay district, I'd like to bring them to a planning commission at a later stage. Brought up some ground opportunities for the police department here that Chief Williamson's going to head up, and we've had several meetings with TSW in development of subdivision regulations.
There's a lot going on.
You said I'm on the rep too, didn't you?
It's just a, it's a slice of it.
You don't have time to breathe.
Cut out, I just tried to cut out a lot of it and.
And what you just said, I just counted up, there's twenty-six bullets there. I for one will actually thank you to you and your staff for everything you're doing for this town.
Absolutely. You know what, I tell you what, Chris.
I would say in some way we could unload some of these projects, I'll be with the lady rest, we need to do too much, but every one of them are important.
Well, I just want to say thank you to Carissa, to Julie, to Chief Williamson, to Chief Gilder here, and to Skip Copeland, you're very excited to work with him on the report on these projects, he's already been such a tremendous help, and we're really going to keep that momentum going.
That's right.
I have a new t-shirt, momentum, keep it going.
Thank you. Thanks, yeah.
Yep.
All right, let's go ahead and move to item nine for town departments. Reports, let's go with police, chief.
Well, my dear, as exciting as it is, it's a part of the, here it is.
But, but, before you get started, again, what did you get this week? What'd you get this week?
Certified.
Thank you. Certified, please, to you, stay above home. Congratulations.
All of these processes are slow.
Aren't they, huh?
So just to start with vehicle equipment updates, I actually spoke with Dana yesterday in Little Rock Arkansas. The parts for these buildings are still three or four weeks out, and then three or four weeks to get it built. So.
That's an argument, where do we stand if one is no further away?
Response from the city on trucks, they shouldn't be a lot further along, since they had most of the equipment. Just got an email from Axon, I saw them in Durant last week at the chief's conference, and I had to talk to them about, we're trying to expedite some of that equipment, since we don't have any existing equipment. So just got the email that they are expediting the tasers and body cameras and the docking stations and all the hardware. Prior to that, wherever we had B and B or IT people run the wires and were prepared for that equipment to be installed. Purchased all the ticket writers and the printers for all of our vehicles, we received some of that equipment. We've received our holsters for our blocks that we've ordered, the weapon flashlights, we've ordered stop sticks for the units, rechargeable road flares for all of the units.
So I'm actually glad.
We have a car.
Wow.
Yeah, I like them better than the traditional road flares, because when you strike those, it's like striking a match, and officers turn holes in our uniforms, and we're going to replace those, and it's potentially start a fire.
Maybe you got a call.
I don't mind creating work.
What are the LED, or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can get them out and demonstrate them later.
Yeah.
Got a quote for Dana's safety uniforms for some of our gear and stuff, so that once we finish the hiring process, we'll have most of our gear ready to go. That has been ordered. We've purchased all of our infrared radios, handheld radios for all of our positions that were allocated. Been to a lot of meetings.
I don't know if that will ever end, Lou.
I'll sooner go to all the heart departments.
Okay.
You know, Cody's here.
Okay.
Just trying to hit some of the highlights here. We did post jobs for the positions that the board approved last week from that, as of this morning, we received twenty-six applicants. Several from inside McCurran County, and a lot of them are from Arkansas. And I talked with the Cleet Ramps to see about the reciprocity, if we do hire them, if we can speed that process up, to make it as quick as possible. Myself and Julie had participated in a lot of the Tyler Technology RMS enforcement mobile and the court databases, trying to figure out a system for the court and the police department to operate off of.
What's your town hall security, what do you, what's your thoughts on that as far as located contractors?
We did reach out to one, he came by, and still have one to dispose of.
So what are they looking at, trying to achieve?
For the interior door coming out of the, from the library into the work area where the doors are at, and then enclose that wall behind Julie's station with the flexi glass.
And do that, I mean, touch base with you.
Okay. We really would like safety glass, but it's tempered facility. It's expensive.
As I say, what's it compared to flexi glass?
I would say probably ten times. It's real expensive. They have a ballistic boarding that goes into the walls as well, and with the glasses, it's expensive.
I guess you can't transport that, once you're done with it.
We're going to move.
They have a tempered shower over there, for the glass.
I'm not sure. That's all I have for the board.
Thanks, Chris, we appreciate you. Take your new bath.
They provided those to TNE from one of our vendors, everything else is mine.
Cool, nice.
But this is what, what my.
Well, we're looking forward to the uniform.
Looks great.
Still have to get a patch, but.
What do you do with it? Do you have to take it to your shirt?
It's not approved.
It's not approved.
I can't apply the colors, because they're not approved by the board, but this is our latest one.
Yeah, a little bit.
Can't see it. Thank you, chief, I know we've been a long, long road, and we're getting there, we're getting there.
Well, I mean, Cody can't believe we stole the line a lot, but.
Yeah. We take, we take these moments to really think about how far we've come, and this is a, this is a funny moment. Well, it's a big deal.
You got this, hiring Adam and the team that he has put together, I mean, we all work together pretty closely, I'm excited for our department. I like the things that come up.
Absolutely. All right, Lou, you're up, next.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
All right, so in order to just, all stuff that we have to have, resistive job lock, the black truck team, unless you've already seen it, thermal cameras, the SCAs came in, the thermal cameras are in my office, the SCAs are locked up in the closet. Fire hose, as I said, it's fourteen weeks out, the manufacturer, I called them, they're going to speed that process up, because we don't have anything, so they're supposed to get back with me and let me know how quick we can get them. I've got a list of nozzles to be approved next, that is on here in eight weeks, once they get approved, it's going to take around eight weeks to get the nozzles in, so we've got to have the whole set of nozzles. Brush trucks get a letter tomorrow at nine thirty, so it'll be here, she's going to let her here on the ground, so somebody will come see when that's done. I got a measure for bunker gear yet last night at the county meeting, the sales representative met with me, so I'll have, hopefully in eight to ten weeks, I'll have a set of gear, which that belongs to us, officially with our name on the back of it. Tommy's down there putting security in at the fire station right now, and we had shipping container delivered this morning, it's sitting there now, so we can start sorting stuff, so the city knew it.
Who's doing your security then?
Tommy.
Tommy, I'm at D and D Technologies.
Okay, yeah.
So we have to, our, our town.
Okay.
We're still working with pension board, they've not helped us at all, I had them, contacted them this week, got to do something. I'll call them every Monday and every Friday since I've been here, and they keep telling me they don't have the paperwork, they've got to make the paperwork. So I don't know where to stand on that.
So while I was sitting here just now, as you're getting up, the CFO called them, left me a voicemail saying that we can speak with him and, who's him, who's the CFO, and the executive director, Chase, Friday afternoon, we can get to the bottom of why your paperwork coming under your seat, and they're going to get it straightened out.
Because right now I'm losing time, I'm not paying the pension, so now my time for my retirement has stopped until we get that going again.
Yeah, we'll get that fixed on Friday.
And we want that done before we start hiring people, because they're not going to want to come to the pension. We had sales lady here yesterday for uniforms, and then later on, we're going to look at some fire engines, and we sent out, had a custom logo made, it's not on the agenda or anything, but we do have it done. So I don't know what we, especially if they have to get that approved later on, but we do have a rendering done for y'all to look at at some point.
Right.
That's all I got.
Well, that's a lot.
Question, sir. Since we're trying to be free and open here, to understand everything that's going on. Just because we're not giving money to the pension fund, is the only reason why we're not setting them aside, and we can put it all in there, once it gets started, or is it not the way to work?
You can't buy it back. So you can only, you can only pay it in at the time, you can't buy it back.
Yeah, just start winter, it's filed, we just got filed.
It's not, I mean, the world, I think I'm coming in, I'm losing about two months, it's not, I mean, terrible, so just hope that we can get this probably get it settled, we can get it done, so I can have that thing back in my pension.
I'm assuming Adam, this is just part of the court.
Yeah, unfortunately, I really think it's some of our employees that have been the issue, but we've got a hold of the CFO and the executive director now, but we're going to stick with on Friday.
Okay. Sorry. No, that's all good, we expected that. Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Cody, we appreciate you. Hopefully you'll have, you'll have some beer to show us next month.
It'll take a little bit, but I'll get it, get to you real quick, they're going to speed it up soon, we don't have anything, everybody that we've been talking to is, I've explained to them that we don't have anything, we're not replacing, we're not just trying to get more. we're not just trying to get more, we have nothing. So, a lot of them are speeding that process up to get us what we need.
Have we had any more applicants?
I think we've got, I had thirty.
Okay.
A lot of just emails, but I think I only did, I've only got like six, but I've got quite thirty emails.
Okay.
Give or take.
So, we're, we're probably a couple of months out. What do you, what do you?
A lot of them are not even certified, some of them are fresh out of high school, uh, so where I remember building them down, get the ones that are certified first, uh, because we need people that are ready to go to work. Unfortunately, we don't have letters to hire people that don't know anything yet, so. At some point we'll be there and we'll get some trained people, but now we need to focus on getting some certified people onboard.
Some of those that applied work?
Yes.
Okay. Great. All right. Again, thanks, Cody.
Thank you.
All right, let's move to item ten, discussion, consideration, possible action, approval, rejection amendment, and or postponement to amend this previously approved monthly spending allowance for Police Chief Christopher Williamson for two ten thousand with a limit not to exceed five per individual transaction. So, Adam, could you, um, or potentially even Chris, um, explain why this threshold needs to be moved up a- as we move into this first phase? Yeah.
Yeah, uh, so this, this will actually help, uh, him get his department online a little bit quicker. Uh, because right now, the way that you have it is his monthly spending limit, uh, is five thousand flat.
Correct.
That's it. Um, so you're going to increase with this item to ten thousand and then you're going to limit his transactions to five. Five thousand per transaction, but his cap overall, all the other per month is ten thousand.
Okay.
Fantastic. That allowed, the way I understand it, that allows him to go buy miscellaneous equipment, know we're going to need without coming to wait for next month.
Of course, equipment, gear, you know, all the small tools that he might need.
Is this the same, is, is your credit card set the same way, five and ten?
No.
What's yours?
So, I have a spending cap of forty-five thousand if it has to do with roads. And if it doesn't have to do with roads, then my spending cap is ten thousand per transaction and I do not have a cap per month.
Okay. I knew there was something different, but I wasn't for sure, couldn't remember.
Hit, and once again, explain that it's, it's.
So, his cap for the whole month, he, the maximum he can spend, well, he can come to me and then I can approve it. But the maximum that he can spend on his own is ten thousand and on a per transaction basis, five thousand max.
Okay.
So, I mean, if he has two five thousand transactions, I mean, he's down to one.
Down to one, okay.
Uh, I mean, of course, you have a bunch of smaller ones, but once he gets ten, he's up.
Is that enough, Chief?
It's, uh, it's better than the current standard. You know, like I say, once we hire our, our four officers and I can get all of their gear ordered that way. Uniforms best and, you know.
Yeah.
Get them ready to, to go.
And if there's ever a situation where he needs more, then we can, we can, um, we can either go through you or we can have a special.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Fantastic. Second one. You got any other questions?
I have. I would make a motion to, um, amend the chief's monthly spending allowance to ten thousand dollars with a limit not to exceed five thousand per individual transaction.
I'll second that. Get a real call vote, please.
Howard Hager?
Yes.
Diane Jordan's accent, Todd McDaniel?
Yes.
Chad Sargent?
Yes.
Brenda Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Fantastic. Item eleven, discussion, consideration, possible action, approval, rejection, amendment, and or postponement regarding adding Fire Chief Cody Gilbert to the town votes town credit card.
If we're thinking about the same thing that we are, Chief, Chris, I'm going to make that motion to approve him for, uh, town credit card.
I'll second it. Roll call vote?
Howard Hager?
Yes.
Diane Jordan's accent, Todd McDaniel?
Yes.
Chad Sargent?
Yes.
Brenda Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item twelve, discussion, consideration, possible action, approval, rejection, amendment, and or postponement regarding giving Fire Chief Cody Gilbert his spending allowance of up to ten thousand monthly with a limit not to exceed five thousand per individual transaction. So, same situation?
Same identical situation.
I would make a motion to approve Cody Gilbert. Uh, an allowance of ten thousand dollars not to exceed five thousand per individual transaction.
Todd?
Todd, yes.
Howard Hager?
Yes.
Diane Jordan's accent, Todd McDaniel?
Yes.
Chad Sargent?
Yes.
Brenda Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. So, this will expedite any expenditures you guys need as we, as we move forward. Okay, item thirteen, discussion, consideration, possible action, approval, rejection, amendment, and or postponement regarding the purchase of firefighting nozzles and equipment from Conrad Fire Equipment for the Hoopstown Fire Department as outlined in quote one fifty-three, eight eighty-three, and not, not to exceed ten thousand, seven ninety-nine, twenty-two cents.
So, this is just all the nozzles we need to get running. I mean, this gives us all our crossways, all our big lines. This is, this is just the bare minimum we need to have lines in service when we get a truck going.
So, these, these lines will be compatible with, I guess these trucks are, do they have?
They're all same, yes, they're all same, all the size.
Universal? Okay.
I'm going to ask this question now and maybe. When we, when we, if and when we approve a fire truck on another agenda item. Per, per, do these fire trucks have any equipment on them at all?
Most will not, some will come with ladders.
But as far as nozzles or anything, does?
Why does it, do they just take them off or?
What if a department got rid of and kept all their equipment and then they just sell the truck?
They just keep their old equipment and just sell it and get rid of the truck.
Okay.
I wanted to, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Wanted to understand.
Okay.
Is this, uh, procedure eight, ten weeks out?
Eight weeks.
Eight weeks.
They're going to try to help us out on it, right?
I think so, right? Okay. Something we got to have, we got to keep building this fire department. Make a motion to approve the purchase of the firefighting dollars, ten thousand, seven ninety-nine, twenty-four.
I'll second it. Get a roll call vote, please.
Howard Hager?
Yes.
Diane Jordan's accent, Todd McDaniel?
Yes.
Chad Sargent?
Yes.
Brenda Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, item fourteen, discussion, consideration, possible action, approval, rejection, amendment, and or postponement regarding task order number two for a hydrological study by TSW and the Choctaw Hill subdivision including Greenling, Chinook, and Halber Bay at a total cost of thirty-seven thousand five hundred. So, you touched on this earlier, Adam, anything you want to follow up on?
Uh, not necessarily, uh, just again, this hydrological study is going to protect the town uh, as we come in and restore, uh, the drainage situation that's over there. Uh, we're going to work to restore the original and natural flow of water and drainage for the Choctaw Hill subdivision. And, uh, having this hydrological study done will protect us from any, uh, litigious, uh, actions.
So, I'm, I'm assuming that, are the other two roads of concern or just Chinook?
Um, I think that, uh, this hydro study is going to give us a broad understanding of mostly, probably about three-fourths, uh, if not the entire, uh, Choctaw Hill subdivision. It's just, uh, I think that in this particular case, uh, in the town's best interest that, uh, that we go ahead and have this hydro study done.
Okay.
Yeah. If, uh, if I may, uh, generally in Oklahoma, there's, if the nat, you are not, you don't have a cause of action for the natural flow of water. If something alters that natural flow and causes flooding and you have damages, that is a reason you could potentially file a lawsuit down. So, if you restore something to its natural flow of water, then you've eliminated the, uh, cause of action. You eliminate the necessity of a hydrological study and by experts helps do that.
Um, the, uh, the item on the agenda references services by TSW.
I'm so sorry.
That should be Craft and Toll.
That is Craft and Toll, that is correct. And the Craft and Toll, uh, the actual task order itself is attached, uh, with your agenda.
Brenda, once again, that's, you've got good eyes. Who would have called you, but it might have been a minute after. Do we need to amend that or anything or?
I have a favor to Chris on, uh, how he'd like to go about this. We can pass it as Craft and Toll, uh, as long as you articulate that.
If you can authorize, yeah, you can authorize the expenditure, uh.
We've got the wrong company.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, you can authorize the expenditure with a, uh, separate company as long as it is the same, uh.
Service.
Cost item service.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So, I would make a motion to amend item fifteen to reference services by Craft and Toll and then approve the engineering design services from the company Craft and Toll not to exceed thirty-nine thousand five hundred.
Thirty, fourteen.
Fourteen, sorry. Minus that's fifteen.
Just as another note, what you should probably do is in the, at the next regular meeting, once you get that done, is ratify that expenditure with the other company or revisit it as a, as an agenda item, just to ratify the action.
Yes.
To show that you have a contract with the correct company.
Can you repeat that first part, Chris?
So, since it has the wrong item listed on the agenda, at the next agenda, just have an item where you just, since you're authorizing the expenditure, you just ratify your actions that they approved at this board meeting at the next board meeting.
So, it's approval on the, the events, right?
Right, right.
So, I would collect my motion to reference item fourteen, uh, for the hydraulic study by Craft and Toll and approve the, uh, task order at a total cost of thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars.
I'll second that. Roll call vote, please.
Howard Hager?
Yes.
Diane Jordan's accent, Todd McDaniel?
Yes.
Chad Sargent?
Yes.
Brenda Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item fifteen, discussion, consideration, possible action, approval, rejection, amendment, and or postponement regarding task order number three for engineering design services by TSW and the Choctaw Hill subdivision including, including Greenling Road, Chinook Road, Halber Bay Road at a total cost not to exceed thirty-nine thousand five hundred.
So, this is for your standard engineer and design services and also handling of the bidding process for the Choctaw Hill subdivision, Greenling, Chinook, and Halber.
Did they, look, I see it here. So, they're looking at still being on point for the fifth? For, I mean, I mean, planned liberals, uh, so they're looking at potentially starting?
Yeah, we're starting fifth, notice to proceed in fifth and then, uh, completion on, uh, July twenty-third. So, completion of the study.
That works.
Wait, completion on July twenty-third?
Where it says it right here.
Uh, for task order number three or task, task order number two?
Hydraulic study.
Okay, the hydraulic study, you're going to do it quicker, uh, but this is task order number three. So, this is for the actual construction. So, you're going to have your hydro study and your construction. And so, we're on the construction element now.
Okay.
And the construction element, um, again, it says TBD on the task order itself, uh, but after speaking with Jeffrey at length on this project, uh, if we have this approved today, uh, we can expect construction to occur within the first week of August and construction is anticipated thirty to forty-five days from day one to completion.
And that's the good what, Chinook and Halber?
That's Chinook, Halber, and Greenling. That's all of.
Thirty, forty-five.
Correcting all the drainage structures, running, running your ditch line, uh, stabilizing the base. Lay asphalt.
Is, is this, is this basically what, the same thing we're doing in Mako? Are we grinding up old, repacking and putting a new surface on top?
Yes, we're bowmaging it, we're going to repack it as much as you're basing, yeah, and then they're going to test, uh, the, the, the compaction rig.
Right.
Uh, and then they're going to lay the asphalt on top. But this, this particular job is going to be a little bit more oriented around a lot of your dirt work and the drainage situation.
Right.
It's a serious issue, you're not so much on Mako, but in this situation here, a lot of it, the, the reason why it's going to take such a long period of time, because you can bowmag it and lay asphalt super quick, but a lot of this is going to be held up due to the drainage and dirt work that's going to involve correction of drainage structures.
And I'm sure putting that many tin horns in, we're going to wind up getting into utilities somewhere. I would adjust.
It's going to be involved with it as well.
Yeah. Somebody going to be out of the law flag.
So, will that, uh, so I'm assuming, Adam, on the, uh, engineering design service?
Uh-huh.
Is it going to be a similar, a similar, um, timeline on the hyd- hydrological study or is it going to be a?
On task order two, it actually outlines some of the goal dates. So, the completion date is July twenty-third for the hydro study. And so, the hydro study will be occurring at the same time as his, as he's designing. Yeah, because it's going to be a separate office that handles the, the hydro and then he, he does the actual thing. So, you, you're going to have both of those occurring at the same time being completed and pushing forward. It's not going to be, okay, got to do the hydro, okay, now hydro's done, okay, now I'm going to design it. They're both going to be on at the same time.
On that, okay. Great.
I would make a motion to approve the engineering design services by Craft and Toll at a total cost not to exceed thirty-nine thousand five hundred. Uh, also amending item fifteen to reference Craft and Toll as the contract.
We'll get a second.
I'll save it.
Roll call vote, please.
Howard Hager?
Yes.
Diane Jordan's accent, Todd McDaniel?
Yes.
Chad Sargent?
Yes.
Brenda Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And before we move on, with permission of Mr. Williams, I would actually thank you for giving us the permission and privilege, your oath and account and, and for the town to understand and working with us.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you, sir.
All right, guys, let's go sixteen, discussion, consideration, possible action, approval, rejection, amendment, and or postponement regarding civic plus agenda and meeting management select AMMS proposal including the implementation and annual subscription agreement as outlined in the post statement work and presentation materials. So, this has been a long-winded project, but Adam, you want to fill us in on?
Yeah, so, I'll kind of, just kind of cover a general scope, but I'd like to follow in on Julie, uh, here, here in a moment because she's been attending all of the, the video calls, the webinars, talking with all of her staff. Um, but in my opinion, this is going to be tremendous help to Julie with her workload as her workload continues to grow larger and larger here with the town. Because I mean, I'm telling you, every day, uh, she has another role and responsibility to play for us as I'm on to her plate. And this will help significantly. Uh, total setup costs going to be about seventy-two hundred dollars. After the first year, it'll be about thirty-three hundred dollars, uh, annually. Uh, if you guys have any questions about, uh, the performance and organization of the software, Julie's ready to answer any questions. Uh, but overall, this will streamline the creation of the agenda, uh, uh, every, for, for any seat, for any meeting that we have. And, uh, it'll help, uh, organize things more effectively and get the documents that she needs, uh, with one more time in there.
Yeah, it does have a lot, a lot of automation that will expedite per day to day.
You have this?
Um, I do want to point out that, um, that this will be extremely helpful, one, but not just for the Board of Trustees meetings, but this can be configured up to ten boards. So, not only am I clerk for the Board of Trustees, I'm a clerk for the banking commission, I'm clerk for the, um, development authority. So, it'll help with all three of those, not just one. Um, and also, it's not going to change our, it won't change the look of this. So, and if this gets approved, I basically send him what, um, our meeting minutes and what we would like for it to look like. And also, it's not gonna change our, it won't change the look of this, so in, if this gets approved, I basically send him what our meeting minutes and what we would like for it to look like, and they'll just implement that, and it'll just kind of be automatic. And also how I create an extra meeting notice and agendas with notes for Mayor and I to take notes on, it creates that automatically based off of the agenda that's already been created. It is a hundred percent cloud-based, so we don't have to wait through server lines for it to get installed, it will take a couple of weeks for me to speak with them to make sure our agenda is likely like it and we do a test run. It will, since we do, are using Civic Plus for our website, Civic clerk will automatically implement this on our website, like on our meeting minutes, so I'm not having to do an extra step, it'll just automatically get put out on the website. It will take each of you visiting with me if this does get approved, so we can look at the backend of how we will submit agenda items, just because the way we're doing it now, it does clog up my email, and I don't ever want to miss anybody's agenda item request, so that way it's just consolidated to one place. It also creates the Word documents and any thing that has supporting documents for the agenda items that you will all provide, it has a place to automatically submit those. And each person will, the board member will have, board members will have only limited access, so like you can support, like you could submit your agenda items, but myself, Mayor, Liz will have the ability to edit it or approve it or, you know, do the next steps. It's, I have a video of anybody to, they told me that they will provide training to the board members, like I said, so that helps, but I think it will streamline all of the, the, the boards that we have, keep it in one place.
Absolutely, so Adam, you see this long-term being something that a lot of cities are using now in towns, are they not, I mean, across the nation and not only this estate?
I did ask for different municipalities and state, if you could provide me the contacts, and I did contact two or three, and they provided feedback that they thoroughly enjoyed it, I mean, maybe go out here.
Sure. Yeah, it's kind of similar to having a corn salad system at a restaurant versus not having one and using paper and pen, yeah, it's not in date, so I think, I think this will be a great investment for our future and for Julie today. So this is, when are we expecting, Adam, for this to go live, maybe to, what do you think, Julie?
They told me it would just take a couple of weeks to, for me and them to work back and forth, just to make sure, you know, this is how we want them to look, it could possibly be ready by next month's regular board meeting, because there's no software that needs to be installed or anything, it's just getting them what we want it to look like. They did say that our first port, they'll stay with us through the first board meeting, just to make sure everything, like words and looks good, and after that, we obviously can call them at any point if you have any questions, but. Very quick.
Great.
I'm getting this one, of course, I'll tell you. This is seventy-two hundred initial setup, thirty-three hundred annually. Uh, is this a? Annual renewal, or is this a one, two, three-year contract minimum, what are we looking at?
Yeah, we, yeah, we can't, we can't do more than a year, so it'll just, every year.
That's what I was thinking, and I saw this port shop where, so I was a little confused, I didn't think we could go more than a year.
Okay.
You knew you were asking me.
Look at that, look at that, look at that. Right there, next week. Yeah, let's forget it, prove that, so.
I can make a motion to reapprove a city plus shop work for a town clerk.
Will you give a second?
I'll second.
Roll call please.
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan's absent, Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Okay, guys, seventeen, item seventeen, discussion consideration, possible action approval, rejection amendment and/or postponement of authority, the purchase of one engine truck for the Houstown Fire Department through a informal competitive bid process as provided in Houstown Code Section three dash one dash five with five bids submitted for review through broker, Brenda Mountain Fire Apparatus, Ringly Mountain Fire Apparatus, Firemaster Fire Apparatus.
All right. Okay, here you come.
Got a lot of. Just here to spend money. So the first truck, I just wanted, I put this one here to show you the difference, this one obviously is a lot cheaper, this is a little bit, what we call a commercial cap, this is the same cap you'll see on like a dump truck. They were not manufactured to be great use for fire trucks, and that's why the price is so much cheaper than the rest of them. And also the tires, how they sit in front of the, the driver, the turning radius and everything on this truck is a lot worse, it's not gonna make as tight of turns as the rest of them, so that's why I wanted this one here to show you. It is a thousand gallons, it does have a big enough pump, and you see it's only got a three hundred thirty horsepower engine, so it's pretty underpowered for two of the trucks it is, and as heavy as it is. All the rest of them are pretty comparable, some have a lot more miles than the rest. The next one, the two thousand nine Canyon, has a four hundred fifty horsepower Cummins with an Allison transmission, a fifteen hundred gallon tank and a thousand gallon tank. And it only has forty-one thousand miles, and you see it's, it's two twenty-five. It does have some better options, it's got the automatic tire chains, it comes with two ladders, which again, we don't know if the ladders have been tested, we don't know if they're even in service anymore, it just says it comes with them. And the length of that truck is thirty-two foot and it weighs fifty-two thousand pounds. The next one is a little bit older, it's two thousand eight, they don't have a lot of information on this truck, it doesn't tell me the horsepower or anything. It only seats four versus the rest seating six or five. And then the two thousand nine Pierce on there, I spoke to him, the front of the truck is pink, so he said it needs to be repainted, or they will try to do some buffing to get it back red, but they said it's super sun faded, and more, he said it's very pink now, not red. And it's, again, quite a bit higher than the rest.
Fireman Barbie.
Pretty small engine compared to the rest, but it only has sixteen thousand miles. The next one, the two thousand ten Pierce Contender, that's, that's the one that I'm pulling for, it does have the four, four hundred forty-five horsepower Cummins, it is the shortest truck of all of them and the largest. So it'll fit better in the building down there, and it'll have better turning radius, it does have quite a bit more miles, but Adam reached out to some folks and they said this truck was, was a pick for them as well, for the fire department, they said it's a good truck. The last one, I just agree with you, they have another bid, but it's, the price one's not listed, it's like three eighty-nine, three sixty-nine, and the reason is, is it has a big light tower on top, you can deploy it, like those generators, you see with the big light towers, that's mounted on top of it, and it has a built-in air compressor to fill the SCBA bottles, which is the reason for it being so much higher.
Is that their big picture?
Yeah, gets your own pack that'll get back.
And it's what, twelve, two thousand twelve?
I think they're all pretty close to a year, I think they're all pretty.
The last one is a two thousand twelve, and it only has eight hundred fifty gallon tank, it's not the end of the world, it's only a hundred fifty gallon short of the rest, but eighteen thousand miles, but again, it is roughly sixty to eight grand over the rest of them.
What's the, is the, what's the length on the one prior?
What, twenty-ten Pierce Contender?
Yeah, what's the length on it?
Twenty-nine, four, twenty-nine, four inches.
Oh, I see, so this, this last one is a little shorter.
Yeah.
Forty-nine, seven. Twenty-nine, seven.
Oh, okay, I thought it was twenty-eight.
And they all have built-in generators on it now.
Cool.
We would have to supply them with just hand tools, the basic hand tools and stuff, but we can get those pretty quick in front of the G.
Twenty-ten, does it carry six?
It has seating for five, yeah, well, that's only hiring two, there's only gonna be two guys on duty, and I'm driving myself, that puts us three, and it's got four seats that the air packs will be in, so it's plenty big enough for all of you.
So this one, you, it seems like the consensus is that one's the most recommended one?
Yes, sir, and I like it, it's a good, because it's a little bit shorter than the rest, so it's a lot easier to get around on some of these tighter roads, and some of the. Yeah.
Yeah, that one seems to be the best, the best choice. We had, uh.
I'm gonna put him on spot, and I hate to do this, but, and, yeah, there's a, there's, you say three sixty-nine to three eighty-nine versus two twenty-nine, so we're talking a hundred and sixty thousand dollar difference.
Yes, sir.
So. And you said the last one, explaining this to me earlier, number one, it's got the compressor in it for the SCBA's.
Yes, sir.
If we went out and bought the package of broken mode guy, fill SCBA's, and this is a permanent, that is fire station situation, what would that cost, whether?
I sent some quotes yesterday, or sent out for some quotes, and I don't want to say something about my head, but between thirty to fifty, what a compressor. And that's a, a mounted one in the station.
That's a mounted in the station, that's not portable. If we had.
I'd rather use a motor.
Fires, you can run that out and you can become an SCBA's.
But again, I, I've never used one there, so I almost think I have to work or how fast I feel.
And you said this and that, the light tower on top.
Yes.
And it's how much again?
I'm ninety percent sure it's three eighty-nine, I think, I think Julie said, yeah.
How much was this one?
And with that. There's a high, this truck height nine-five, I don't know the last one, had very cool nine-nine, okay, four inches difference.
Which leg or door is it on? Uh, the one, the main door is like a fourteen or sixteen, there, there are plenty of quality, but I'm just thinking low hanging limbs. Yeah. Some of these places, in and out.
So, question I had, Cody, was, I'm just curious, if you were to, just in theory, compare it to, to buy a used, which, most of the equipment that I buy for my business to be used, every, every once in a while, I buy something new, I feel, I really feel like it's, it's needed, but. In, in a scenario where you were to build, build and buy a brand-new fire truck and lease separately, wouldn't the cost be astronomically more than, I mean, have you ever thought about that, or, I mean, what would a new truck cost if you were to have?
A new truck, let's say just like this one, same size, around about, and I've found pictures of brand-new ones, and I was gonna include them just so you can see the difference, but you're looking at between, I would say between seven hundred to a million, depending what we put on it. So, the, the, we just had that commercial cap, we had a dump truck cap built, and it was four fifty. So, to do a custom cap like these, you're looking between six to, six, seven to a million, pretty easy.
Yeah, this makes more sense.
And to lease one, I did look at leasing, and I sold that for, it's around two hundred to two fifty a day to lease one, so that would cost us quite a bit of money, long-term.
Yeah, this sounds like this is.
The reason why it costs you such a, a large amount of money for the leasing program is to build one out to our customer spec, brand-new, we only got twenty-four to thirty-six months.
Yeah.
And so, you multiply that, and you got that, that's your cost, not with the new cars.
Sure.
Not a big fan of mileage on that, but it was like a thousand gallon, unless the horse got out. Especially with the hills around here that we've been through, with, with a thousand gallons in there, it's a little like.
I wouldn't want to bother with that.
My.
Just because, you get less than a thousand, and that's not having a tanker or water supply here of hydrants, and we're five hundred gallons of the copper car, so.
You build carpet, that's common, so, will we, will be performing a thousand plus?
I think, I think so.
I do too.
Probably the best one we did, so.
Yeah.
Does this have any kind of warranty?
It'll have a, so through Brindley Mount, it'll have a one-year major warranty, like, you know, the motor goes out or something like that.
Well, you're the expert, and if this is what you like, then that's.
I'm gonna ask the same thing that we asked on the brush truck, is it, is it worth airline tickets or road trips to look out?
Yeah, so we can, we can go there, it's in Alabama, right there's, I don't remember exactly where, Union Grove, but I'm going to look at counties close, and he did say that we can come out there, look at where we're gonna look at, that would be a y'all question again, I mean, this is less than what we paid for the brush truck, but it's also a used truck, we knew the brush truck was good, it's brand-new, so.
Will you feel more comfortable going out, or do you think you're okay with purchasing that as a?
I mean, if we go out there, we can just look at it at the same time, if he can do some. And it comes with a pump cast, a new pump cast, and then a warranty, and guarantee that everything works when we get it, so.
Okay.
That's what you did on the brush truck, right, they sent a video of the operations and the truck, rather than truck on there.
And it'll come with an actual certification, it has pump casts and everything.
Right.
Yeah, and that's the main thing, it's only for the pumping runs, so.
Well, a lot of this is new to all of us, so.
It is.
Looking at it is, yeah, we're leaning, we're leaning on your expertise.
This is more like one of the main manufacturers of fire trucks in the world, so, just for informational purposes, Union Grove, Alabama, is out, about an hour outside of Huntsville.
Oh, okay.
So, between Huntsville, which is sort of at the north end.
Maybe looking out, I don't know.
Uh, yeah.
At least.
Fly, fly.
Go ahead.
I haven't, somebody's got an airplane, maybe we can tell them that, so. Anyway. Well, I'm looking at another thing about time, time brain, I'm calling the word here, but. I'm comfortable with it.
Good. So I think it's just one step forward in being prepared when we're, when we're ready.
How, how quick does this affect our ISO rate, like, is there a certain date that they come down and evaluate everything?
So once we get operational, what we say is, we've gotta be able to move at least four thousand gallons of water, so we have to have this, and we have to have some sort of tanker before we can lower it all. So, once we get this, and we have all the equipment on it, and manpower on it, and then once we get a tanker, we don't have to have, technically have manpower in the tanker, we just have to have it, so once we get that, where we can move four thousand gallons, right then, when they can come to evaluate us, and we can get it lowered, we can start getting it lowered, so.
And that said, that was the reason we put the budget the way we did, that's the reason we moved the four hundred thousand into this year's budget, so we could get this off before the end of this year, or get something off by the end of the year. And we've got enough money appropriated for the next physical year to get, start looking for a tanker, so, we buy this on this year's budget, and we start looking for a tanker at the end of the month. That said, everybody comfortable with it, I make a motion to buy the two thousand to make the offer, or make a phone call to authorize the purchase of the two thousand ten Pierce Contender bumper.
I'll say.
Two hundred twenty-nine specs.
Todd, second, can we get a roll call please?
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan's absent, Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
No phone call.
Thank you, Cody.
Uh, they'll ship it for free.
Really? Oh, good.
Guess we should have asked.
Shipping's a minute.
I hope, I hope it gets there before ten o'clock. Yeah, I hope it gets here before ten o'clock, and I hang on anymore. Anyway.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, guys, item eighteen, discussion consideration, possible action approval, rejection amendment and/or postponement of authority, ordinance number twenty-one, an ordinance of the mayor and board, trustee of town, of Houstown, on repealing section seven dash one dash eighteen, be voted to obey, code of ordinances title seven, motor, motor vehicle and traffic, chapter one, state traffic code administration, general provisions, section eighteen, traffic citations provided for severity, provided for repealer.
So on this particular item, I'd like to, to thank Ms. George, Chris Chandler on this, on work on this, and then also Matt Rock, who's also one of the attorneys, for, uh, review our code of ordinances, and kind of a little bit of, uh, I was watching the email chains of all of y'all's debate and discussion on this, and, and Chris, I really felt like this needs to be changed, and Chris Williamson, Chief Wilson, was included in these discussions as well, as we were progressing through the criminal offenses, Mr. Chandler, if you want to make comment on that?
Sure, the, the tip we are on this is, it's extraneous, it's.
Sure, the, the two of you are on this, it's extraneous, it's a little ambiguous, because it states that, uh, no matter what, regardless of the disposition of the case, there shall be an appearance, or else you can issue a bench warrant. And I talked with Matt Love, one of the primitive authorities in Oklahoma, in the Code, he said, you could delete this if you wanted, you can repeal it. There are already provisions for issuing a bench warrant if you fail to appear, and this could be construed as ambiguous, uh, as agreed, and so, and I'm, I'm of the philosophy that if you can eliminate a part of a code and not have any practical effect, do it to simplify it, and it also will eliminate ambiguity, and so, and I, I defer to Matt Love's views on this, and, and he said, yeah, you want to get rid of it, that is not a problem with me, so I recommend you get rid of it, I remember, and you repeal that section just to simplify it and avoid a problem in the future. And Liz did agree with that as well, but.
Okay.
And you guys, I mean, we can discuss it, if you have questions for me, or if you want to ask questions in executive session, you know, you can, but I don't think there's, again, there is no practical difference between this, other than you can issue additional citation if they fail to appear, but you're already giving a bench warrant.
When we do our codes and ordinances, when we adopt them, we're subject to changing it any moment in time, it's a normal thing.
This, this is a little nice, but.
Yes, and it will, and a potential, I mean, I, I see a potential defense if they, that, because it says regardless of the disposition, that you could, I mean, if I was a defense attorney and wanted to find a traffic ticket, I might say, well, that's unconstitutional, so therefore, I'm gonna, you know, challenge you on this, and I also want to challenge every ticket, every citation that you've issued for failure to appear under this section, so.
So, are we passing it or are we amending it existing?
Amending.
You're repealing.
You're repealing a subsection of an ordinance.
Okay. So, I would make.
So.
I would make a notion, a notion, a notion, a motion to repeal section seven dash one dash eighteen B, failure to obey, from ordinance number twenty-one.
Second, I'm hoping to second one.
Roll call, please.
Howard Hager.
Yes.
Diane Jordan Zappson, Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, guys, we're, item nineteen, discussion, consideration, possible action, approval, rejection, amendment, and or postponement of order, the implementation of Tower Technologies Municipal Justice Software Solution, including associated software licensing, professional services, hardware, training, and annual service fees.
So, this one, um, was really spearheaded by, uh, our attorney Liz and Julie here, and Chief Williamson. They're readily available to answer your questions about, I think Julie particularly, as she's attended all of those meetings, and, uh, has gotten Charles to, to watch the video and provide his input on this as well, uh, he's, he has our municipal judges in support of, uh, the software, but, uh.
I also had Liz Chandler, uh, watch the video, and he approved, uh, you know, the software and the usability, it's super simple, it will take, um, they set up to twelve months to implement the software, since we have no existing software, it could, like, we, what he said, the longest, or the challenging part of this is typically, uh, you know, municipalities already have a software in place, so they're having to wait, so they break up with the old system and get all of their information, but since we don't, since we don't have that already, it could be quicker, um, so, I know one of the questions will be, what will we do, um, if police is up and running, and we are writing tickets, um, before the software is updated? And I have Chris, um, explain that to me, so.
Sure, yeah, so, and I'm talking to Chief Williamson about this as well, when, when a citation is issued, the violator gets a copy of it, just print an extra copy, I mean, there is already an extra copy usually printed for the judge, just print an extra paper copy, keep it in a docket, just like the old days, when some of us were kids.
Before computers.
Before computers, when we had, you know, which we carried around a ticket, and then you just have that as the docket, you can track those until such time as they can be loaded digitally into the system. And, and, and also, uh, if there is, because this is an online system, maybe a day or two before the docket call, the ones that are actually, have not been adjudicated, haven't either paid a fine or whatever, uh, go ahead and maybe print a paper copy, have a paper copy available of those in case of a power failure or an internet failure, and that way you can still hold court on that one day a month when it's scheduled, so. There already is a paper backup system, this will give officers, the judge, and myself, practice on doing that, until we get the system up and running, and that way we have a fail-safe fallback position that we're already accustomed to, uh, should the system fail because of the internet.
I would also like to add that, um, this wasn't the only software that we looked into, and most of them are all anywhere from six to twelve months to implement, um, so that's just the time frame on this type of software, um, but if you did look through it, it, um, they hand out, it is pretty simple, um, I, well, I'm a court clerk too, so I'll be able to print receipts, take money for fees, um, when we are in court, um, the software will be up and running, and if the judge has any specific requirements on certain fees, that can be set, um, there in court, and it's already uploaded, it does automatically send, um, monthly reports, weekly reports to, um, the state, so if it does, um.
Automate.
Automate a lot of stuff, it can be set up to any, for any violator, um, reminders to cellphones, that you have a ticket, and you have coordinate coming, um, I can track it, uh, there's a lot of different tracking available through this, um.
That's a one-time cost?
Well, that's what I was looking at, you got page one, that's got a, you got a.
Where I got confused.
You got a code on it, maybe, uh, Julie or Adam can, it seems like you have that one-time, the weapon, and then you have the additional, um, it looks like the summary total is twenty-nine, forty-five, is that paid up chrono or time?
Well, it'll certainly be paid up, uh, upfront, um, but I, I can't find anything right here, uh, after like the annual, okay, here it is, recurring fees is fifteen thousand four hundred and forty-three.
Yeah.
Uh, a year after the one, you know, so after your first year, your first year upfront, it's gonna be twenty-nine thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars for us to get it set up and to operate for a full year, and then after that, to renew each year, it'll be fifteen thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars.
Yeah, another, uh, and I mentioned, another part of this is the, it has reports available, you can publish for public consumption, and that, that'll also be, you know, avoid having to fulfill for you a question, but it'll be available on the internet, and the state statute, and the open records and meetings act states, if it's available on your website, and you're already providing access to it, it's not up to the office or the officers to copy, to provide copies to people, so this and the other, uh, I think Civic Plus Management System will do both of those things, and take a lot of the burden off of Lisa and Julie of having to run those reports.
So, is this, this is a standard program, Chris, do you see?
I don't know, I have not seen or looked at this before.
Is it due to?
Yes, this, I, I can answer that.
Chris, my usual.
Yeah, I, I can answer it, Tyler Technologies is a very widely-used municipal software program, that's a comprehensive suite package of anywhere from utility billing, to community development, building permitting, to court software, I mean, they, they just about, I mean, if, if there's a municipal function, then they make software for it, and many, many communities do use it, and also, Chief Williamson, uh, if you want to speak on this order as well.
Yeah, we, we use Tyler Technologies, one of those with Tarrant County, uh, and so on, of course, we actually built the system for all the inconstable precincts, the sheriff's warrant division, district clerk, county clerk, and the JP courts, so that all of this would have modules in the system. So, it's very widely used across the country, in local government.
Is it, is it widely used in small communities as well? Yeah. I'm just estimating, you know, volume, and, or, what did you say?
The problem always is.
Oh, did you? Okay.
Good, and so, thank you.
Well, you had said earlier, yeah, you had said earlier that it was optional companies, but you felt like, is this the one that felt like was offered what we needed, and offered had the best?
Yeah, um, because I did reach out to surrounding, uh, towns, and the broken mode that use them, and they suggested, uh, plenty of contacts for me to talk to, and so this is just reports, and then we also had a meeting with Tower Tech for the.
Enforcement module.
Enforcement module, so, I'll, we'll, we'll, we'll be understanding.
Cool, okay, sounds good. So, can we get a motion, we, we, guys? I make a motion, we approve the action of implementing Tyler Technologies Municipal Justice Software Solutions. Do they have a cost?
Uh, it's two, twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty, I'm gonna pick that, twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. And then after that, it's fifteen thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars a year, that, that's not relevant, your motion right now.
Can we get a second?
I think Mr. Chandler.
Well, I'm just thinking about the, on the extent, if you're approving it today, and so that'll be on this fiscal year's budget, and not next fiscal year's budget, or whether it'll be on the twenty-five, twenty-six?
Yeah, and it's fine, we'll still get it for a full year.
Yeah.
Yeah, still after a year.
Okay.
And so, we'll be redoing it the next fiscal year budget.
And I did, uh, speak with Frank and their offices, and I did, um, when we did the budget summary, they asked for any potential big, uh, purchases that were to be made before the end of the fiscal year, so they are, they are and have been aware of these potential big purchases, especially for fire.
Sorry, Brian, will you hear that?
Good job.
Okay.
Good job. You can add a motion if we have a second.
We have to get.
I'm gonna motion.
From Todd.
Yeah, I make a motion that we implement.
I second it.
Render it, second. Get a roll call, open it.
Howard Hager.
Yes.
Diane Jordan Zappson, Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Well, when we talk about the ever-growing list of responsibilities for Julie.
Automating them though, we're automating them.
Okay, guys, we're at item number twenty, which is discussion, consideration, possible action, approval, rejection, amendment, and or postponement of any discussion in executive session pursuant to title twenty-five of Oklahoma statute, real seven, B three, to engage in confidential communications regarding the purchase or appraisal of real property to be used as a potential site for town hall and or related town facilities. I make a motion, we enter into the executive session.
I second that.
Render it. All right.
Roll, roll.
Howard Hager.
Yes.
Diane Jordan Zappson, Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters.
Yeah.
See, you, yeah, thank you. All right, that's good.
You ready?
Yeah, okay, guys.
I make a motion, we reconvene, our session.
I'll second it.
Howard Hager.
Yes.
Diane Jordan Zappson, Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters.
Yes.
Motion carries. We convene, uh, for a second.
We have a item twenty-two, statement of executive session meeting minutes. Who's in?
No action. No action, this is.
No action.
It might say, because there were no actions.
No action taken. Item twenty. Roll call.
Uh, who made the motion, please?
Oh, sorry.
It's not action.
Yeah, it's not.
There was no action. So, we don't need to.
No roll call.
Okay, all right. Twenty-two, discussion, consideration, possible action, approval, rejection, amendment, and or postponement on any discussion from executive session.
After discussion of executive session, I would like to make a motion to direct, uh, town administrator Adam to have contractors to conduct studies to determine the suitability of available properties for the purchase by the town for wastewater treatment and other town, uh, buildings and facilities, not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call, open it.
Howard Hager.
Yes.
Diane Jordan Zappson, Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item twenty-four, new business, any matter not known, and which could have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda.
I do have new business.
Okay.
Okay, uh, so these are votes of office for the Hoast Town Development Authority, and I will need signatures from each of you as you replace in these positions. We will get Diane's signature at a later time, we can go out and find her, it doesn't necessarily have to happen in a public meeting, uh, help us, hold on, uh, it's your turn.
We are the veteran.
You do not, I just need you guys to sign your votes of office for the Hoast Town Development Authority. Your positions have already been affirmed in the creation of the Development Authority.
I don't miss that.
Sign, what, great?
And thank you to Skip Cooper for getting that together for us.
Thank you, Skip.
You bet, it's, um, this is just a brief update on it, everything's filed, state, secretary of state has everything, it's all been submitted to the state auditor's office, we haven't received the acknowledgement back yet, but they, they have all those things, these O's will be, uh, uh, notarized, and, and this is kind of the last step, so now, we can convene, you can do an official, you can swear in if you want to at the first one, uh, but we needed these documents to be able to say we have everything in place, and, so be, be looking, be on the lookout, we'll try to get a time together when we can, we can convene the first meeting, but, we will publish, um, there's two schools of thought, one is, is that if you're a new entity, you can publish your calendar for regular meetings, but some attorneys think that you probably, for the remainder of this year, they should all be special meetings, I think just to be on the safe side, and to follow Brooks's advice, we just make the rest of the year special meetings, and then we'll publish our calendar by December fifteenth, and next year we'll go into a regular meeting cycle. We're gonna try to run all of them adjacent, so, if we can do this by July, next month, we'll have this meeting, and adjacent to it, we'll just have a quick, uh, Hoast Town Development Authority meeting. It's exactly like broken mode. But that's where we at, and we, we had good progress this week, I appreciate Adam helping me kind of prod and get some people moving for us, and, and we got things accomplished pretty quickly, so, uh, we're, we're moving around along, one step closer to being able to establish credit.
Absolutely, thank you, Skip, thank you, Adam.
Proud to have you on board, to give me an answer, he's up to many hours before.
It's a, it's a magnificent workload he has.
Okay, guys, do we need to?
Anything else, anyone who could?
Do we have to make a motion, we need to uphold that new business, we're good, okay. All right, guys, well, item twenty-five, discussion, consideration, possible action, to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
I second.
Roll call both, please.
Howard Hager.
Yes.
Diane Jordan Abson, Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters.
Yes.
Motion carries at three twenty-one P M.